I'd like to call to order the May 23 Tuesday study session for the St. John Parks and Recreation Board. Can we immediately stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At least most of the people.
Okay. Mike, if you would be so kind as to run the roll call.
Barb Tuesley. Yeah, this is your here. This is roll call.
Here.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Cindy Seuss.
Here.
Mike Moffett. And Dave Beesold.
Here. Okay. Basic reason that we're here tonight for this part of this is to deal with the Freedom Fest and the farmer's market. So, some of this is new to you guys, some of this is old school to some of us, so what we've done is ask Patrick and Rebecca here tonight to kind of fill us in on what's happening, how it's happening, and where we are at at this point with two months to go. So Patrick, you're up first.
Alright.
Freedom Fest.
Hello, and I do have a little packet for you if you will run through that with me. So if you go to page two, we'll just go through and update you on everything. So, update on the sponsors. If you turn that next page, you'll see a list of all the sponsors that we have currently. Green is obviously everybody who has signed and already committed, sent in their check. Blue is people who have committed but not yet sent in their check. Yellow is obviously information that I've given out to everybody, to those people, and then red is a no-go. It's up to this point, we are at twenty-two, twenty-two thousand. I believe we have another six to eight that have confirmed but not sent in their checks yet. So I would say, yeah, by the end of this month, we should be up to about thirty. Following that, going next to our vendors, I have, last year, we had, I believe, five different vendors with Malt Brothers doing both food and alcohol. This year, Malt Brothers is signed on to just to do the alcohol, and then we have fourteen and one more pending vendor as far as this year goes. So, we've basically quadrupled the number of offerings and vendors that we have there for this year. So yeah, that's our vendor list that we have. Next up, with our banners and signs, I don't know what you're looking for or interested in there. All of our banners are going to be reutilized. We have, we are pulling permits and going through the steps to make sure that all throughout the month of June, we are littering St. John with banners and with the street signs and all that kind of stuff. So that project is all underway. Everything is going to be popping off in June as far as marketing. Our social media marketing has already been going and strong. We've been getting a lot of movement as far as Facebook and social media, Constant Contact blasts, that kind of thing. We're going to be doing flyering. We're very involved with the Chamber of Commerce and making sure we're connecting with the community there. So that's more of our marketing side of things. As far as the layout goes, if you take a look at the next couple pages here, we have a couple maps that you can look through. That first map is of the actual festival. We're playing around with a couple different ideas as far as what we want to do to fence in the area and allow there to be a bigger footprint as far as where you can consume alcohol, not just inside the tent, but also throughout the festivities and families being able to stick together while they're going through the games. Obviously, if you see to that left-hand side, we are going to be adding in games and vendors and the bounce houses in there. So yeah, that's our layout as of right now. If you have any major questions, we can go through that. The next page is the layout of our Freedom Fest 5K. So we're going to be doing, to kick off the Freedom Fest this year, we're doing two different things. At two o'clock, we're doing a 5K, and then at 2:45, we're doing a one-mile color run for the kids. This is the map that you could see here for the 5K and the color run. So yeah, that'll kick off our festival this year, sort of get people interested in coming to the beginning half of the festival. As we know, 5:00, 5:30, it can get, it will get crazy, and it will get, it will pick up as far as traffic goes. So we're just trying to add more and front-load this, the front side of the Freedom Fest.
I do have one question about both your early events. Are we going to have, in the event that it's 100 degrees, are we going to have some sort of a water station or something?
I do have a water sponsor, yes. We have a...
You know what I'm saying. I mean, at some point in time, even a 5K for some people could be overwhelming in 100-degree heat.
Correct. We will, so we're going to have water tables out along the courses as well as a water station at the end of the course.
Great, great.
Was there another question?
The only other thing is last year, we did sponsorship banners.
Yeah, so as we are finishing up, I gave everybody a deadline till June 12th for as far as sponsorships go. So that way, it'll give us enough time to get all of our logos and everything over to the print shop to get the big sponsorship.
Because we had it done here locally in town.
Yeah, we're going to be going through that R&amp;B printing again.
And they did not only a great job, they did it exponentially fast, so I mean, we were able to move right ahead. And what we kind of tried to do last year, too, was highlight our feature sponsors, our platinum sponsors, this, that, or whatever. And, you know, not that we don't want all of them being somehow acknowledged. It was more important that. And then we had like one or two inside the tent, one or two outside the tent. And like I said, they were very, the printing company was very good about it. Last year, People's Bank sponsored t-shirts. I don't know if you remember. I don't know if you were there at all, but they were optic yellow. I mean, there was no doubt on who the...
Workers.
Who the workers were and who the volunteers were in case there was an issue or something like that. I can reach out to Kelly. I'm not sure if they have any left over from last year. I don't think there was a year on them. It was basically just a Freedom Fest.
Yeah, if they have extra shirts, that'd be, that'd be great. We do plan on getting shirts again this year.
Yeah, there again, they may have given them away, the ones that they had left. But I mean, basically, it was worth our time and effort to give the volunteers something to...
Designate them.
Yeah, well, not only just designate it, but as a thank you to, for being part of it, because it was multi-staged, you know, a few hours here, a few hours there, somewhere there from the beginning all the way through the end.
Sure. Yeah, no, there are plans to make sure we designate who the volunteers are and have t-shirts for them.
Okay, and do we have a list of our vendors?
Yeah, so if you look at the second one, that smaller sheet, that is a list of your vendors that is on there. So there's a list, there's two lists. There's a list of all your sponsors, and then there's a list of your vendors. And again, green are the people who have paid, signed, notarized. Yellow, I'm waiting on the notary, and then red is a no-go.
Anybody from last year not go this year?
No, we have all the returners, both, well, Pollyann Cakes, Bizer's Kettle Corn, who Malt Brothers are back, Kona Ice is back, and then Lunchbox is back.
Good.
Do participants in the 5K and the one-mile color run, do they have to pre?
Yes, yeah. And there's a website that's already up and running through Race Roster. They will be, they will be doing the timing system out there as well. So we will have both the timing system out on the course clocks so people can see. It is an official 5K this year, so we are not getting the course certified as a 5K, just in case if next year, there's, if we make one little change to the course, then it's no longer certified, and to certify it would cost money. So this year, I was saying, we'll forego the certifying the course, which it may or may not, as far as the 5K crowd goes, hurt or help us, but I also do think for our first time running it, we don't necessarily need to certify the course, just in case we want to change something up next year.
Thank you. And is there a cost to run in this race?
So, we did hire on Race Roster to be supplying the timing system. They are supplying an arch for that. Yeah, they're going to be taking care of that, but other than the cost, that is the only cost for the race.
Thank you.
Is there a cost to registration, though?
Yes, so yeah, so it's $40. I don't know if that, I'm sorry if that was your question. I apologize. It's $40 for the 5K, and then it's $25 for the one-mile color run.
And is it going to be age bracketed or anything like that?
We will, we will have two different age brackets for, we'll have an 18 and older, 17 and younger age brackets. I do have, you know, Fleet Feet is one of the people we've been talking to as far as awards for the runner, for the fastest, fastest times there. So we are talking to a couple different fitness places in the area and specifically the running places to sponsor and help out there.
Hey, the whole fest, it says it's starting with, so everything is going to be starting at 2:00 PM?
The race, just the race is starting at 2:00 PM. The band and everything starts up at 3:00 PM. So yeah, after we get done with the race, after we get done with that color run, then that's when we will sort of welcome and everything will start up. The band starts up at three, I believe they set up at three, but they will start welcoming the runners in as they finish.
Vendors will all be set up by three?
Yep, they realize and they know that at 3:00 PM is the start time.
How are we doing budget-wise?
Good, good. I mean, it was appropriated. It was $57,000 is what it was appropriated for and stuff. So I think with the tents, the fireworks, except for the race, a few of the other, the video game truck, you know, some other items. I think we're at like 16,000 remaining, something right around there. So that we have, would not have used with, of what's appropriated.
And obviously, the cost, yeah, we don't have, but are you charging for the vendors?
$100 for each vendor.
Okay.
And is that with the permit that they need from the town?
They take care of the permits and every, they, all they, it's a $100 vendor fee, and you know, we get them signed and notarized. So yeah, that's a good point, too. So we, this year, that, yeah, it's 1,400 right there.
And then like the Malt Brothers, too, we'll get a little back from them as well on their beer sales and stuff, as they did.
Are we getting anything back on the bouncy houses?
No, that is, we contracted those in. So bounce houses, the video game truck. Oh, did you? Alright, well, I might have to pick your brain then. No, yeah, so the video game truck is somebody we contracted in. We have a face painter there who we contracted in, a face painter balloon twister. So yeah, those are some of the ones that are more, we had to go ahead and purchase and contract them in.
So that would be the same with the vendors? You're not, we're not going to collect any?
So the vendors, yeah, so the vendors is just that $100 fee. The only one that is different is the Malt Brothers because they're selling alcohol. It's a percentage from them.
Are we charging, does this bouncy houses paying for being there?
No, we are, we pay the bouncy houses to be there.
We paid the bouncy houses to be there?
Correct. We rented them.
They're rented.
Are they charging the kids to go in them?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no. Yeah, so the video game, the video, anything that we have purchased in is, so like I said, the face painting, the balloon twisting, the video game truck, that's all stuff that is free for the kids to be, and the games, to the carnival games. So yeah, we've been contacting places like Ziggy's, what are some other, Birdie, Blackbird is going to do a putt-putt thing. So all the carnival games, all that kind of stuff is going to be free for the kids.
And I think you and I spoke a little bit last year about the glow rings and stuff like that. Did we do anything with that?
We've been talking about doing, for us ourselves, doing small glow sticks, that kind of thing, maybe something like a glow stick necklace. But we do have a vendor there who is selling glow-in-the-dark swords and butterfly wings and...
The only reason, we gave that stuff away last year. I think we had like a lot of $500 budget, and I mean, because it's basically, I'm going to be honest, it's probably a 12 and down thing, that, you know, that's the age group of kids that want them. And obviously, if one has them, the other one has to have it. So I mean, and giving them away was, I thought, was not a, was not a big deal. But I don't want, if there's a true vendor there that is looking to make money, if they're not selling the necklaces or the bracelets or anything like that, then maybe that's something we can look into, but if they are, then I wouldn't want to.
So I'm going to probably, yes, I absolutely agree. A lot of the things, a lot of the games and stuff are going to have the giveaways that we can be given to the kids. That's the hope, you know, driving more traffic over to the games, near the vendors and stuff like that. So yeah, that's where, that's where we're talking about what we can be giving away to the kids. The glow sticks, glow necklaces, that's definitely been something that's been tossed around.
Does he have free bouncy houses?
Yes.
Oh, you did. Are we advertising that? That's a biggie.
I can, yeah.
I mean, you know, when we had our Easter egg hunt, we charged, and I got $700. I mean, we just had to, you know.
I think last year...
I think you could do that. I'm sure you could, but yeah.
No, but I mean, so I mean, people came and spent a lot of, a lot of money, so giving to them free, I mean, they're going to be absolutely ecstatic about that.
Well, hopefully, they'll spend more money with the vendors.
Well, I think initially last year, because it was the inaugural event, we were looking just to do anything we could to market it and get people and family, people out there, only because they hear alcohol and right away, they think adult. Okay, which is in fact true, but at the same token, we're marketing towards families and kids, too. So that was part of the whole idea behind it.
So will those bouncy houses and other freebies, will that go till the duration until the fireworks start, or is there a time?
Yeah, no, we have, we have them out there. We contracted the video game truck and everybody to be out there till, you know, the start of the fireworks. Apologies. Yeah, so right around that 9:00, 9:30 time.
Thank you.
I just see some people on here that I know. What is the lowest sponsorship?
Well, honestly, anything. But no, on our sponsorship letter, we have sponsors from, a bronze level is 500, and then a platinum is 2,500. But we, like I said, we've done everything in kind as well. We have a physical therapy company that just started out. They're going to be the water table sponsors and bringing that. So yeah, we've been bartering and trading and if there's things that they, that you know of in kind that we can utilize, let me know.
The St. John Lions Club, maybe they don't know about it, but I will make sure that they do.
We could use a lot of volunteers from the St. John Lions Club.
And that's my next question is, because, you know, we're here to help you and to help you. What kind of volunteers do you need and how do they sign up?
So I can, I can come, I can send a volunteer registration form, but right now, what I've been, what I have done, the main focus has been on the Lake Centrals. Dollar for Scholars, Track Team, Football Team are the three prominent ones that I have connections with, I should say. So those are the ones that I've reached out to, but yeah, anybody and anybody that is willing to help. I know we've had a couple of organizations that have come in asking about volunteer hours, you know, Girl Scouts, that kind of thing. So we have been, I got to get that together and send out a volunteer registration form. Alright, well, thank you. There, I got one.
We're covered security-wise and all that.
So we have been talking to the police department, and we've been going back and forth with Malt Brothers. They're going to, we've been talking about them to contract in a police officer, you know, hire on a St. John police officer to be IDing and making sure that our beer tent is obviously safe. And then, yeah, we have talked about, talked to Chief Flores to have...
Well, we did the bracelet thing last year. It was just the simplest way to identify people that have gone through.
Yeah, we're probably going to do that again.
And yeah, well, here's the problem. We ran out of bracelets. We were literally putting magic marker rings around people's wrists.
Well, we'll make sure to have lots of bracelets this year. Thank you. No, yeah, it's, this year has been going really well. Right now, our big focus until, until day of is marketing and continuing getting sponsorships, raising money, that kind of thing. So if, if there's any names or warm leads that you guys don't want me following up with, I'll be more than happy to do that.
So they'll be able to go on and register online to the Park District site event soon to volunteer?
Yeah, so I can actually, I can actually email every one of you, and I'll put it up on the, I'll have, talk to Jason over here about getting something up on the, on the actual website.
And are you emceeing the event?
I can. I absolutely can if that needs me.
Well, I mean, I, you know, we're going to have some sort of a color guard, correct, with the vats and stuff like that?
Yeah, so yeah, both the VFW, we've been talking to the VFW and American Legion about, they would like to, then they haven't come up with the details yet, but they would like to do particularly after the race, before the festival gets started, some sort of honorary salute or playing of the National Anthem right over there with the flagpole at Heartland Park.
And what about like the fire department? Are they planning on, I know last year, they brought a few trucks out there just for the kids to kind of...
Yeah, that's another thing they're going to do. It's like a touch a truck, type of...
That was a bigger thing than I, than I thought it would be.
Sure. Oh, yeah, I think kids love that. I think kids love doing that. So yeah, there's, I, we've talked to both the, like I said, Chief of Police and Chief of Fire, and making sure that they're, they're on board, and that is one of the things that we brought up is sort of that touch a truck, touch a cruiser activity for the kids.
Was there anything else that we can do for you?
Oh.
Individual, you know, I mean...
That's a loaded question, Barb.
We're here. I'm here anyway, you know. I have many talents.
Yeah. I mean, as we've been thinking about this, as we've been going over everything, I mean, day of details are, they feel like they're falling in place pretty nicely right now. All this, I think the only thing that, that is a big question mark for me and is how can we continue to get sponsorships and raise money for this is, and that's the biggest question that I would have for anybody is if you have leads and anybody that you would like me talking to, I can go and do that. But as far as, as far as vendors go, I think we're pretty, like I said, we have, we had one more vendor up, sending their application this morning, which would make it 15. I think, we have so many vendors, which is amazing.
We have Elephant Ears?
We have Ben's Pretzels.
That's all we need, really.
It's not the same.
An Elephant Ear vendor.
I think there, honestly, I think there are plenty of fried foods. There's going to be plenty of fried food there, so I don't think that you will go, go for wanting when it comes to Elephant Ears. No, that has been a big thing as far as, as far as this year's goes, is just how can we, how can we give more to the community? How can we give more to the, to the kids and to the people? And that's been a big focus with adding in the games, adding in more vendors, making it more than, as Dave was saying, more than just sort of like a concert with beer, having it be a very family-friendly event, and that's been the big focus for this year. So yeah, if there's, if there's ideas that you have that can sort of go in that, along those lines, I'd be more than happy to hear and talk, talk those ideas out. But I think, I think right now, we are, we're sitting pretty nice as far as details and who we have there, what we got going on.
Did you contact Welch's Stop &amp; Shop to see if they wanted to come out?
I have Strax coming out. The only thing with Welch's is we do have a bunch of different people doing grills, and I know the FOP and the Fire Department wanted to do burgers and hot dogs, so.
And they were part of last year's, but they were in, in co-op with, with Malt Brothers, right.
So if they want to get in co-op with the FOP and the Police Department, or the, and the Fire Department, I say absolutely. We would love your hot dogs.
You're kidding, they're steak sandwiches.
Oh, there you go. Well, if they're going to, if they're going to part with a bunch of steak sandwiches, I'm down for that, too. But yeah, no, the only reason I haven't gone there is because of that reason.
I don't cook, by the way.
And is the Fire Department and Police Department, are they planning on this?
That's what they, they said. They, both times I've talked to them, they have...
And the only reason I say that is, being in the food service business, I can help in that, in that, in that way as far as setting them guys up if they want to have Barbe steak sandwiches. I can make that happen.
That would be, I would think that would be a conversation with them.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, I mean, I didn't realize that you were going down that, I mean, last year, I donated a bunch of stuff to Welch's because they're a vendor of my, of my company. So it was something that we were able to, to do for the volunteer, because that was part of the deal, too. Any volunteer, we gave out like a ticket to, and we, for lack of a better word, we fed them. You know, but it was, you know, it was basically a hamburger, a hot dog, or a bratwurst. But I mean, it was some, there again, it was our way of giving back to them for helping us out. Perfectly willing to get involved with that again. I just, without Welch's there, I didn't know how we were going to have someone that could do that.
No, yeah, I can, yeah, I can reach out and connect with the Fire and Police Department, see what their plan was, and if, if they wanted to go more that Welch's route, we can connect, reconnect.
Well, if that's the way they want to go, then we can, you know, I can, I can collaborate a little bit with them, and we can, we can do something, whether it's for the volunteers, whether it's for, you know, anybody of that type of thing that we can, you know, at least help encourage more volunteerism, too.
No, I agree. I agree.
We got the Mad Bombers fireworks stuff signed already, too.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
Is the tent going up Saturday, then?
It will be, I think it's, it should, it's June 30th is when it's initially supposed to be started and stuff. Well, yeah, yeah, it was, it was, I don't think it's going to be, because June 30th is a Tuesday.
I think it's a Friday.
June 30th is a Friday.
It's a Friday, yeah.
Well, that's really not that bad. That's not...
Because the weekend on...
Okay.
It's Sunday and Monday, so...
That means we got to put a bunch of signs up on the, on the tent to bring more marketing to it.
Yeah. And Public Works is on board as far as?
Yeah, we talked with the...
What streets are going to be closed with this?
We don't plan on closing any streets. I mean, the only time there's going to be any sort of closures or police presence needed as far as closures is during the race, and the initial part of the race is, I mean, you can even have, when they're on the back straightaway, when they're off the, off the street, you can have the police sort of escorting and ushering people through. So there really is no, no need to close any streets.
And for Public Works, yeah, we, we talked yesterday and prior to that as well. So that's, it's a good thing, it's two to the third, it's a workday, too, it's an actual workday and stuff. So that would be helpful. But yeah, there, everything should be okay. We are going to meet with everyone again, just to go, re-go over the layout again, but...
Well, I know last year, we had Patnau Park kind of in our back pocket as possibly parking in the event that we had that many cars, because, you know, for those that are, that come, leave, and come back for the fireworks, I mean, there's that stream of vehicles from about 8:30 to 9:00. And I mean, at some point in time, we just literally run out of space. And then, you know, that was kind of our, and obviously, weather has its own challenges. If it's raining or something like that, then some of these alternate parking sites, like, you know, by the building up there that Public Works has up there, we parked a bunch of people up there. We had them all over, needless to say. I mean, so I mean, and there again, because I don't know what Midwest themselves have going on, but they were part of our, our deal last year. They were selling pizza, and the only thing I can say about that is we, as a group, did not help them market that opportunity. Okay, because most of the people stayed, and I don't know if they're on board this year or not, but they were on board last year.
Yeah, they're, they're going to be out there with the game. So Black Birdie is their grill, or Blackbird Grill is their grill that's attached to Midwest. They're going to be participating in a game to get a little bit more exposure out there. They did say they're going to open up their, their doors for people who wanted to come in and utilize their building.
We kind of helped, we kind of sold them last year on the whole concept that, hey, if we can get them inside, that you can... if we can get them inside, that you can, you can market your own facilities, programs
Right.
as a way to reach out, because there's a lot of people that see that building and may not quite understand what that's...
Yeah, I, this year I'm trying to get them outside of those door. I don't, I don't think it's very realistic that people are gonna walk across the, uh, parking lot and, and over to that building.
This is the problem that we found.
Um, so this year, it was my, it was my intention to actually get them outside of the doors and out with us, uh, within the tent.
How many porta potties are we bringing in?
We have two there. We'll have four.
From an aging woman.
Yeah, I believe there's gonna be six there total. Six there total. Two of them are gonna be handicapped.
Yeah, four standard and then two, two hand washing stations.
Good question. Garbage cans, we have, we've had that, uh, um, Republic Services is gonna be handling the garbage, uh, so they, we, they're on board and everything, uh, so that's taken care of. Sanitation's taken care of.
As far as donating stuff.
As far as donating, yeah, sorry. They're donating the garbages.
Nicole, is there anything you wanna add from a legal standpoint or anything?
No, I know that there were things that need addressed last year.
Right.
Volunteer waivers.
Right.
Waivers, things like that, so I'm not...
Okay.
Do you have a, a copy from last year, the, the volunteer waiver and agreement?
Well, I know last year when it came to the alcohol, that Malt Brothers brought their own people, all certified, all ready to go.
That'll be the same again.
They, too, weren't sure what to expect, and it went from, yeah, we'll bring in a half a dozen volunteers to about an hour later, all hands on deck, and then they had to call in the, the...
Well, I think they're, they're, they're preparing for that a little bit better. Like I said, they're not gonna be doing the grill.
Right.
They're not gonna be doing the food, so that took up a lot of their, a lot of their manpower as well. They're just gonna be doing the alcohol. So they, yeah, they, I mean, they expect and want it to be, you know, just as, as successful as last year. They, they, they enjoyed it even though it was crazy, but, um, but yeah, no, that, they, they did, they are preparing for that and because of that, they're just doing the alcohol side of things this year.
Are they within the tent, or?
They will be with, they will be underneath the tent again this year, yes. They're gonna be the only vendor that will be in that tent area. All the other vendors will be outside of that. But all the vendors will be within the snow fence.
Anyone else got any questions or concerns?
Mike, I know you were really concerned over there, so just, I appreciate, I appreciate the grilling session.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, thanks, Patrick, very much.
That you've put into this, I...
It's almost here.
It's almost here. Come on out, everybody.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
The bigness of this.
Oh, yeah.
Be underneath new business, farmer's market. We have a couple of, uh, things that we wanna talk about that. Rebecca, if you would come and kinda give us a, an overview of that.
Do you have any? I'll, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start off. No, you can stay up there, stay up there. Uh, 'cause we had a couple, we had some back and forth conversation today with the, with the school and stuff like that, so, um, but just to start it off, so a couple of weeks ago, we did meet with, uh, Lake Central, some representatives of Lake Central about the possibility of moving, uh, the farmer's market from this current spot to, uh, Lake Central. In the, your packet there, there, there's a, a map, one, two, three, four, showing the four parking lots. Uh, initially, we had talked about using parking lot number one over there, that soccer field. But Rebecca could talk more on, with, with this and stuff like that, but after we reviewed it a little more thoroughly, parking lot one is somewhat similar to where we're at now as far as what we, as far as the vendors fitting in there. One of the reasons of trying to use it over here was to possibly, you know, look for the expansion on it and all that stuff and, and to add more. We do have, we do have a small waitlist, right?
We do. I think there's five, I believe.
Yeah, and, um, um, so, uh, we did go back to the school and we did ask about either using parking lot one and two. Obviously, then we would have to shut that, uh, closed off that, um, that would be that, well, I think it's just the entrance, um, off of Indianapolis Boulevard, uh, not the parking lot light, but the one that's in between parking lot one and two. Or we had suggested about using parking lot number, um, four. Um, in your, also in the packet behind there are two different maps, um, uh, just to show you the layout. These are a layout of the actual vendors that we have now, um, showing what they'll look like for one and two, and then what would four would look like. I know Rebecca liked four, um, um, our market manager, um, I think liked both of them, too, and stuff like that, really, 'cause she's, she helped put this together and stuff like that. Um, however, today, today, we were going back and forth and, um, we were told lot, uh, parking lot four, um, has swimming, like, swimming, um, tournaments and stuff like that. Um, so more likely, four was not gonna be an option. We were really initially gonna talk about three, so we're going back and looking at possibly one and two. They're gonna get back to us a little later this week. Um, I know, 'cause there's wrapping up the end of the school year stuff, but, um, but, uh, Rebecca could add more to this, too, but we just kinda wanted to, uh, kinda get your guys' opinion and idea about one moving in over here, uh, make sure everyone's on the same page and, um, you know, to see if there's really any, any concerns or anything like that. The school was pretty open, uh, in working with us and making this happen. Um, parking lot one over there does have the bathrooms that were a plus side, uh, which that's what we were initially going for. If we did not blocking, oh, uh, parking lot four, we would have to do portable restrooms, um, which is what we do now, so it's not, not the end of the world, but, and obviously parking lot four has a lot more room and the expansion is, uh, definitely can fit. And if we use one and two, that also gives us a lot of room. As you can see, there's some, uh, flexibility to, to move, move around and stuff, so. Yeah, yeah, so, um, so that's kinda the gist of it. Do you wanna add anything?
I think you pretty much summed it up. Um, yeah, we found, you know, after being at the market for a couple Sundays, we found that the, um, initial parking lot we were going to, which was number, I think it's the purple parking lot or parking lot number one, um, it's even a little bit smaller than the parking lot we're in right now. So...
There's more parking for people.
There is more parking for people.
Nobody will park in front of my ATM machine.
That is true. They, they do park there for some odd reason.
They, they do park there, trust me.
I don't understand it.
They do. As a woman pulled up there and I pulled behind her, she was gonna get out, and I went, uh, 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 sweetheart, you just keep coming.
Yeah, in the funeral home, they're still, they're still parking.
Yeah, yeah, the funeral home. We, we do have issues sometimes in the funeral home, uh, just, you know, parking. They're not, they're not wanting us to park in there, which I understand and stuff.
It's understandable, yeah.
Nobody's home, I mean, you know?
Well, I'll, I'll say this. I was literally across the street last Sunday at North Woods and parking lot one and two, what was going on at the school at the time, both lots were half full with cars. Completely un-part of a, a farmer's market scenario. So I don't know with flag football or whatever else we have going on there on a Sunday, we need to make sure that we're not encroaching on any other activities that could be going on. I was surprised. I mean, I literally was standing in North Woods parking lot, looking, and, and I'm like, holy cow, there's a lot of cars over there. And I, I was looking for something to let me know that it was a special event or, as far as I know, it wasn't.
On Sunday?
Yeah.
So Sunday would have been the NFL flag football that does work with us, the town. Now, they, they rent from Lake Central, but we do the agreement, so we, I mean, we get, like, we, for that, we get, I think it was five dollars per player that the town receives back from them. So it's like, it's a town program. And we brought that up, too, at the meeting, too, that, 'cause I know they're there on the Sunday. Now, they're there in the springtime, April, May, until the beginning of June, and then they'll be gone the rest of June, July, and August, and then they'll start back up after Labor Day, September, and October.
So we have a conflict a couple, couple months early and a couple months late?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. That, so that's probably what you saw over there, 'cause it, 'cause they use that entire turf field, the football field, and I think they have it split like into eight fields, six to eight fields, I believe, over there.
Yeah, I just, I, I was surprised at the amount of cars, not understanding what was going on there on a Sunday.
And, yeah, 'cause the one thing, when we did talk about that, it was like, it's, it's a plus because then they'll be there to use it, the farmer's market.
Oh, absolutely.
But it would be, I, I also see the negative because the parking.
Well, they would just have to park in lot number three.
Uh, yeah.
Really isn't...
Look about it, that's for physical fitness program.
That's what I said.
Well, I guess, I guess here's, here's my question then. If we're going to have a conflict and we're there early, right? Market opens at what, six?
Um, it opens at eight, so the farmers get there at six.
But we're there, yeah, we're there.
We're there ahead of them, correct?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And they're setting up probably by seven, a little bit after. So I, I just didn't want people to be upset with the fact that their park, their proximity parking is gone. They're gonna have to walk a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm sure there will be a few of them.
Oh, yeah.
No doubt.
No, I get it.
Um, uh, I think, uh, even for, I mean, Shelby, who's the, the manager, market manager, too, she brought that up a couple times, too, as far as, um, you know, even using one and two, now, you know, people coming to the market would have to park in the parking lot three, which is not that far, but it could be a little further than, you know, parking at the funeral home, for example, and stuff like that.
All right, so what, what, are we...
Or in front of my ATM.
We're, we're, we're looking at possibly starting this the first weekend in July after the holiday, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Initially, that's what we're looking into.
Does anyone see a conflict or a problem with moving it to Lake Central?
No, I think it's a good idea, 'cause I've never been... When, when, I don't go there because the parking is...
Correct. It, it, it is prohibitive.
It's terrible.
It's prohibitive, I agree. And because of all the other foliage and stuff there, if you don't know what you're looking for, you drive by it and you're like, what's going on over there? Where on forty-one, right there in the wide open, people are gonna know real quick what it is. And obviously, if we move our signage from where we're at to there, it's going to make all the difference in the world. I think we grow ten or twenty percent exponentially, just from, just from optics.
I agree.
Well, they'll, they'll, Lake Central's already, so they'll put it on their kiosks, or on their, on their...
Sure.
On the massive board that nobody wanted?
Man, turn on the nice one.
Yep. All right, so we're, we, we have no, no issue with that. I mean, do you want us to then address this in the actual meeting to follow?
Yeah, I think, yes. I, I, I do wanna still go back and forth with the school a little bit, uh, just to make sure we're on the same page and all that, um, uh...
'Cause outside of security, that's really going to be our only quote-unquote cost, right?
Uh, yeah, and they quoted us already a price, I think it was seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the remaining...
No, that's, that's fair.
Remaining, remaining part of the year, starting, I think it was starting in June, actually, 'cause we initially said June, but...
Yeah.
Um, so it might even be a little less than that, but that, for them to be there basically was to open up the bathrooms, you know, there's a gate by, you know, to the bathrooms. We also talked about having music, too, and they're, you know, they're like, yeah, no, it'd be great. Um, so, uh...
Well, I think it could expand, given, given, given the room to expand.
Yeah, we just, I, with the school, just gotta kinda finalize and work out the details and what will help us to expand to, like, I just, I, you know, initially, the locker, like, or, uh, lot one there, I was like, oh, yeah, that's great. And even on site, Rebecca said, no, this is not gonna work. I'm like, what are you talking about, Rebecca? And then we laid it out, and then she showed it, and then it was like, yeah, I know, it, it...
What's your preference, Rebecca? Be honest.
Be honest, yeah.
I really like lot four, but we're running into issues with lot four, so, I mean, I'll be happy with lot three.
You think that's enough room for both parking and vendors?
Yeah, I think we can make that work for, for some parking at least, but definitely...
Using one and two as overflow parking or something along that line?
Yeah.
So that, that would be your recommendation? Well, the only reason I'm asking is, is if you have vendors that have not, you know, that we have basically not been able to use because of the...
That is true.
That we, you know, could, could we fit these extra vendors in lot three and not have an issue?
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I mean, I see, if it's on forty-one, I do see, you know, the potential of us growing probably rather quickly, you know, that is some new people who come by, you know, are like, I never even knew you were here.
Correct.
You know, so, so, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'm just, uh, yeah, I'll get, um, like I said, they're supposed to get back on Friday to us, um, after our latest, uh, back and forth, so. So then, yeah, I'll, uh, yeah, I'll share some more information and then, yeah, I can add it to June. So, 'cause the, the idea was soon as we kinda finalized on something, that we were then gonna tell the vendors, this is what, and, and the public...
Have we dropped any of these hints yet?
No.
Okay.
No, we have not.
No, just, just for the layout, just 'cause we were unsure.
No, I, I get it. I, I just wasn't, because I think their response will be a positive one also.
I think it'll be hit or miss. There's some old timers that have been there.
I think, yeah, I agree. I think there's gonna be a few that's gonna be upset, just 'cause it's, they've been there for a long, long time, and this is what they're used to.
And the newer people probably will like that exposure.
It's going to increase their, their revenue, I mean, potentially, I mean, you have more people, you can sell more things.
Right.
Are you thinking three, just to be vendors only, or that's vendors and parking?
Um, probably starting off, vendors and parking. Or at least some of the parking.
I'm just saying, like, if you got both of you, then you're gonna have people trying to drive in the park, or all the vendors are. 'Cause any one of those lots are kinda nice where you can just kinda cordon off that whole lot.
Yeah.
If you're trying to put parking in there, I think that's gonna come, become a safety issue with people that are trying to buy their stuff, and you got a car trying to squeeze by to find a parking space. And you got the whole backside of the school, too, where you have the silver lot, the yellow lot, that are bigger than these, actually, that, that could be used as overflow, you know, if you can't find a spot. The other, the other thing is the numbers. I think that's gonna confuse people, too. Instead of, we should be using the colors.
Yeah, no, one, yeah, we can use the purple, green, yeah.
Well, they're confusing me, 'cause I'm trying to figure out, I'm like...
Yeah, 'cause I'll see...
I was calling it the Taco Bell lot.
Oh, no.
That's right next to Taco Bell.
I'm used to the...
I'm blonde and I figured it out.
But that's the blue lot, but I never realized it came to a point like that.
Yeah, L C has those, those nice signs that point people in the right direction by color. So, yeah, I, we would use color, you know, the color code you guys have.
All right. And that, that was the one other thing.
Answer me this, then. Would it be your preference to use lot three exclusively for vendors and park everybody elsewhere? I mean, that makes the most sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I don't think we would have, um, I think there'd be a lot of open space for three with the vendors that we have.
Yeah, but that also shows growth, right?
True, yeah. True that.
I think you're gonna run into issues with bathrooms.
Yeah.
That is the one drawback for every parking space or parking lot except for one and two is the porta potties. Yeah.
And then leaving them. The other thing is, too, if we do the porta potties, then, you know, we would have to, in a sense, leave them, and, I mean, we leave them where we're at now and stuff like that, but this, you know, I don't, the school, and I, I mean, I don't think the school would want the porta potties to be left all, all that's year, basically. 'Cause how would we do it now? Unless we took it, you know, we could have it dropped off and picked up. You know, but that'd just be more...
That'd be cost prohibitive, too.
Yeah.
I think probably at least we should look into the sense of maybe if building some sort of an enclosure, even if it's PVC, you know, fencing or something like that, where we can at least lock it from a, from a aesthetics point of view or shut it, so that it's not so visual if we do leave them there, because, I don't know. I mean, you know more about what enclosures cost. I know some of the parks are permanent, but I'm talking about something that, yeah, it's permanent, but not really. You, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's enclosed, but...
Correct. But I mean, at the end of the day, we could, we could literally shut it, throw a lock on it, and it's not getting tipped over when a kid has a failing grade on, uh, on his way out the parking lot.
Our children do that.
That lot is totally sold.
Oh, I know, yeah.
It's been sold out. 'Cause everybody pays twenty-five, that's how they pay for the cameras and stuff out there.
Sure, sure.
I mean, it's sold out. We've been sold out for over a month now, the parking spots. So there's not a lot of extra space, and it's the end of the year. I mean, beginning of the year, your freshman sophomore can't drive, but at the end of the year...
Few more people are driving.
Tomorrow, last day of school, yay!
Well, these are things that we have to at least address.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I, myself, I, I still like one and two.
I know.
We were going back and forth, just because of the bathrooms.
Right.
Um, and, uh, and because we can, if we, say we did a ban or something like that, there's a concrete area that we could, you know, possibly, you know, use, or just a DJ or something like that, but, um...
And do you think that would be prohibitive if we split the vendors up and had some in lot one and some in lot two?
Um, I think it might cause like confusion for some people. In my mind, I think it might cause confusion for some people. Um, I don't think it's a bad idea, though.
Is, is, is the grass tall? I mean, there, there isn't much, there's a...
It's, it's at an incline, like, it goes, uh, lot two is higher, it's like elevated to lot one.
Lot one's a little depressed.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I don't have a problem if, if, if they park in three and we use one and two, but yeah, you're right. I understand from a, from a up and down point of view, because it looks like even with your, your diagram here, you've kinda shoehorned them in.
Right.
And that, basically, we don't, we don't gather any growth that way, without moving maybe anybody new into a different lot.
And it's like Mike said, you, you got the back of the school, and there's some parking lots that are... And it's like Mike said, you, you got the back of the school, there's some parking lots that are bigger than these, but it's the back of the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we, what, what we have there is just the optics of being along forty, and they're light to get people in and out.
Oh.
You know, and, and, and that's part, that's part of it also. So, yeah, I mean, you're there all the time. What's your, what's your take on it?
I, I'm, I see both. Cause three, three is definitely the biggest, that would be your best, but you're so far away from the bathrooms.
Right.
And that is a, a big thing. One and two is nice, cause you're, you're kinda in the corner there.
Right.
You have the bathrooms. I mean, you can walk that road, but it is a little, you know, some of your other people wouldn't like that. But there is access high and low. You got the sidewalk on forty-one and you got the road.
Oh, yeah.
Correct.
So, I mean, they can't get through there. That, I mean, I would go either way, so, I mean.
Well, I, I think part of the whole idea of moving it is to allow for growth. And I think we handcuff ourselves if we either split it at one and two or try to shoehorn it and like, we've kind of observed, if we put it just in one, we really haven't gotten any bigger than what we're currently at, correct?
Correct. We're actually a little bit smaller.
Okay.
But we have parking, better parking.
Yes.
We do. I, I don't know. I, 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 I like the three. That's just my, my take. Cause I think that's our biggest reason for moving, is growth.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I could bring it up. Um, I, that's one, I, we have not gone back and forth on number three, uh, with the school. I think the, the number four there, I think it's gonna be out pretty much, cause the swimming.
And that's fine.
So, yeah.
But that way, we're designated, you know, your football or anybody else has one and two and, and, and obviously, people that are shopping, they're parking there, and either way, they're gonna have to walk. Okay, and they're walking now. I mean, some of them are parking three blocks down along Keelman and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And walking to the.
Across the street, yeah.
Correct, correct. So, I mean, to me, hey, park in one or two, hit the bathroom before you, you make the trek and off you go.
Right.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, I'll bring it for June and then, uh, yeah, we, we'll do some more back and forth with the school. Go from there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
And thank you, Rebecca, for all your work.
Yeah, no, both of you guys. Hit the ground running, we appreciate that. And we kinda threw that curve ball at you last, last month, only because it just, it made sense. Correct, and I think we need to, if, you know, if we want to expand the program, which we do, I think that's the, the easiest way to address it, at least initially. So get your little, uh, pencil and scorecard and start figuring out what you're gonna do with three, if that works.
Yeah, right on.
And with that, I've got nothing else. Anyone else have anything for this study session? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the study session.
So made.
A second.
So I have a motion to adjourn and a second, and we will have a vote. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.